All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started with today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for September 23rd, 2014. We are going to have the council information follow request at the end of the meeting because we have a very, very busy agenda and I think some of the council members have to leave by a certain time, so we'll get started with the other portion of the meeting first. First, I'd like to see if there is a call for an executive session by the vice mayor?
There is, Mayor, and according to the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona revised statute, section 38-431.02.A, meet in executive session on Thursday, October 21st, 2014, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
We have motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass unanimously, do we have a consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second on consent agenda, any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that item passes unanimously, the city manager indicate that he does not have, at this time, a report, obviously he'll give us a budget update during the course of this meeting. Are there employee service recognition announcements today? None for today? Next will be a recognition and a check presentation by our friends from the Arizona Diamondbacks and the Arizona Lotteries for a great program called Break a Bat, Plant a Tree Initiative. Many people watching at home probably didn't realize that when a bat gets broken, good things happen. What are those good things?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Cott, please.
Good afternoon, I am pleased to introduce Jim Burke, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Lisa Mayor, members of the council. We've had a long-term and great partnership with Arizona Diamondbacks and you've seen us before talking about their field building program. This is another creative opportunity they came to us and we were excited to do because it allows us to reach another goal of the city, which is tree planting and shade. So I'd like to introduce today Jeff Hatch Miller, who's the Executive Director of Arizona Lottery, and Debbie Castaldo from the Arizona Diamondbacks to introduce this program and this new partnership.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let Debbie explain the program and share the joy.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council, we're thrilled to be here, of course. Are so proud of our long-term partnership with the city, with all of our youth baseball fields here, so when a creative idea from the Arizona Lottery came up, of course, the city of Phoenix was the first that we thought of. So what you may not know is Arizona Diamondbacks pitchers, although we wish they had done much, much better this year, are such flamethrowers that they break a lot of bats of the opposing, the opposing hitters. So we want to do something creative this year to celebrate our outstanding pitching. And so we decided that every time an Arizona Diamondbacks pitcher broke the bat of an opposing player, we would make a donation to put trees in city parks. Well, so this year, we actually had a very successful year, and so our donation on behalf of the Arizona Lottery and the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation is 100 trees that will be planted in city parks across the city of Phoenix. And so we couldn't be more thrilled to do this. The Arizona Diamondbacks, the Lottery, of course, believe in neighborhoods, we believe in families, and we're very, very blessed to have a partnership with the city of Phoenix. So impressed with the talented arborist here, who has actually helped us select trees and will help us select great parks, so that we'll have a sustained program that will actually build neighborhoods and families. So thank you for letting us do it and thanks for the long-term partnership. Yes.
Thank you very much. So first off, what a creative idea, and I guess we wish for more broken bats this year and hopefully in future years and creative solution to celebrate shade and the need for additional trees in our city. Any comments or questions, I remember the council, otherwise we'll do a check presentation, make it all official, and we'll take a picture. So let's all get over there and to our right, your left, and take a picture.
And we did bring some broken bats, so if you're curious about a broken bat, we bought three broken bats for you to examine, just for fun and curiosity's sake.
All right, thank you very much. And just to be clear, that the tar on those bats was legal tar, did not violate the MLB rules about the amount of tar allowed on bats, just to be clear. Oh, thank you, Diamondbacks, thank you, Arizona Lottery, and we look forward to seeing you next year. Next, as probably everyone in this room knows, everybody watching at home knows, our city is busy planning to be the host community, Phoenix and the region, for the 2015 Super Bowl. And while we're all excited about the opportunity, it is a significant logistical event, and our, in my opinion, our professional team has been doing a great job working with the Super Bowl Host Committee, and there'll be many significant announcements in the near future to get the entire community, not just Phoenix, but this entire region, state, and tens of thousands of visitors from around the country who'll be visiting us, excited about Super Bowl Central, what's going to be happening in downtown Phoenix. So to give us a thorough update about how the Super Bowl planning efforts are coming, and this will not be the last one, this will be first of many as we get closer and closer, I guess we'll start with Paul Blue, our Deputy City Manager, and hand over to our team representing the Arizona Super Bowl Committee.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Staff is here today to provide information regarding the preparations for Super Bowl 49 in two parts. First, the community events that surround the Super Bowl, and second, the regional and local public safety preparations that the city of Phoenix staff are participating in with a wide array of partners. Here with me today for that first half is David Russo, Board Chair for the Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee, as well as Jay Perry, President and CEO of the Super Bowl Host Committee. When Super Bowl 42 was here in 2008, it was a great event, but downtown was a very different place, lots of things were under construction, light rail, the convention center, the Sheraton, the cityscape were all things in process. With these projects complete and many more positive additions and changes to downtown, Phoenix has a great opportunity for the eyes of the world to be focused on us in late January and on February 1st. We view this opportunity through three lenses. First, it's a wonderful set of opportunities for our citizens to attend events even if they're not going to the big game. The Pro Bowl, concerts, there's going to be national TV shows that are operating live from Phoenix, the NFL Experience, and finally, as you'll hear in a minute from David and from Jay, is the wonderful Super Bowl Central, it's going to be located right here in Phoenix's downtown, in the heart of our central city. Second lens is, as you'll hear in a moment, credentialed media, upwards of 6,000 are going to be here, and the sets of a number of live broadcasts for national media shows provide an amazing opportunity for us to show the world what Phoenix is, our diversity, our climate, and the amenities in a wonderful community. And then finally, this media exposure allows us to advance our economic development goals. The corporate community, both nationally and internationally, are large attenders of the Super Bowl. We believe this is a great opportunity, as they attend this, the game, and other events, to be selling them on the attributes of growing their business or bringing their business to Phoenix, Arizona. Key management staff have been collaborating with the NFL and the Host Committee to get ready for this event since early last year, but most actively since January of 2014. We have organized ourselves to support activities in downtown, as well as throughout the community. We've done a good base of planning, but we look forward with a key meetings with the NFL in October to finalizing our plans in both October and November. Our key work has been focused on ensuring that the community has a safe and a fun time. Public safety efforts are critical, Police, Fire, and Homeland Defense Bureau are very engaged, and public safety is at the center of all the plans being considered. Second, we're coordinating extensively on traffic transit, parking, and signage to support the existing businesses and citizens who already work and live here, as well as those who are going to come visit all the wonderful things that are going to go on in downtown. As an extension of what we already do, we're going to make sure that permitting for people who want to do new businesses during this time, have an easy way to do it, just as our current businesses do, who work with us every day. We're extensively communicating with property owners, businesses, property managers, and other key stakeholders in downtown, to make sure we can integrate the Super Bowl activities into the ongoing and everyday, day-to-day business activities of downtown. And then finally, we're going to, we have plans to communicate extensively to the community at large about the wonderful things surrounding Super Bowl, and try to engage the community in coming downtown and visiting all the wonderful events that are occurring around the community. So it takes a village to get a project like this done, and I'd like to acknowledge the support that the Mayor and City Council have provided to staff as we have embarked on this endeavor, the NFL, the Cardinals Organization, the Host Committee, Downtown Phoenix, Inc., Downtown Phoenix Partnership, key leaders on city staff, everybody's involved in helping make a successful event. And so with that, I'd like to introduce David Russo, President of the Super Bowl Host Committee, and Jay Perry, the Executive Director, to discuss both the Super Bowl itself, and more specifically, the events that the NFL Host Committee and their sponsors will be conducting in and around downtown Phoenix.
Mr. Russo, good to see you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Paul, for the introduction and setup. We appreciate members of the council and Mayor, the opportunity to come for you and give you an update. There were two, there's two symbols that I would point you to. One is the countdown clock that some of you helped us open up for business in your airport. Unfortunately, the countdown clock that's in Jay's office also has a second hand on it. That's, that moves every time you look at it, and it's disturbing, so I've tried to see if our technology people could alter it, or we can maybe find a piece of masking tape to go over the second portion. The other symbol that I, that was very powerful to me when I took over this opportunity in helping to fulfill our obligation to the NFL for the, for our bid for the 2015 game, is the bid video, and Paul referenced what condition or state this downtown Phoenix was in in 2008. Effectively, it was under construction, but it was under construction in large part because of the investment and leadership that you and your predecessors have made. That investment is the reason, and it was, and the symbol was captured in our bid video that went in front of the 32 owners and was awarded the, with this game. But it, what that bid video, and some of you have seen it, has everything to do with more. There's more downtown hotels, there's more light rail, there's more Phoenix Convention Centers, the three most prominent elements. So, so we're excited for everything that's going to happen, as Paul alluded, and Jay will talk more about, there's going to be a huge concentration in downtown Phoenix and what is really the new model around the Super Bowl, and it's this amazing pre-party that has a chance to, to, I think, really shine an amazing light on the city of Phoenix for several days leading up to the game and with the advent of the Pro Bowl, that'll even start the week prior. We've had, we've enjoyed a great partnership with your staff and want to thank you for their participation in our planning effort, and I think I'm going to introduce a video, and then Jay will pick up when we're over, but thanks again for the opportunity to be in front of you.
Do we allow clapping or enthusiasm when we talk about the Super Bowl? Somehow, when the video is over, I think there's really no more to say than that, but we're going to drill in just a little bit and give you a peek behind the curtain of some things that have already been planned and also some announcements that are forthcoming. Really excited to be here and talk about it with you all today. It takes a village, as Paul said, and so I have a few, we have very small but mighty Host Committee staff, but we have a bunch of partners in the audience, and I would just love everyone that's been working on Super Bowl to stand up and say you're a part of this. Everyone, stand up. That's a part of Super Bowl, that's touched Super Bowl, Eric, stand up. So, so it sounds like we're recapping, but frankly, we're just getting started, so this is the exciting part. It has been an amazing collective effort, and it really is about creating downtown Phoenix as the epicenter of all Super Bowl activities. On the screen, what gives you an idea is what will be going on the 10 days leading up to Super Bowl. So for us, it's really about this journey that we've been on and that will continue for the next 130-something days until Super Bowl, and then there'll be a football game that is the most watched game of any program in the U.S., so it's an exciting time. So we're going to touch on Super Bowl Central, as well as all the marquee NFL venues and events that will take place in downtown. And lastly, as Paul mentioned, there's a lot of media activities that will also occur, we'll touch on those, live programming, et cetera. So, Super Bowl Central, it kicks off the Wednesday before Super Bowl, January 28th, and runs through February 1st. As David mentioned, in Indianapolis, just three short years ago, this idea of a festival campus that would really be the hub of all activities, this is where it began in Indianapolis. And fast forward to today, it's now bigger than ever, exponentially bigger than it was in Indianapolis, but it was a great success because of their collaboration in downtown Indy, and they thought they'd hit the mother lode because it was an average of 40 degrees. So we think we have a slightly different story to tell. So, Super Bowl Central, the theme is, it's free, it's family-friendly, and it's football-centric. So taking those things to an outdoor campus, and we'll get to the map in just a moment, we really see it as an opportunity to showcase our Arizona brand, which is youthful, energetic, exciting, vibrant, environmentally conscious, we'll talk about some greening opportunities, and all that with room to grow. So what you'll see is we will be hosting anticipated over a million visitors on this campus. So it's a 12-block campus that to the north is bordered on Monroe, to the south, Jefferson, to the west, First Avenue, and then to the east, Fifth Street. So that is the campus, and the red areas that you see are intended to be pedestrian-friendly, and where a lot of work is going on behind the scenes to make that happen and make that work for our business owners and employees in downtown. And you'll see, and we'll walk through some of these specifically, again, these anchor events, NFL Experience, in our wonderful, beautiful convention center, and then over to the left in cityscape, we'll have NFL House, and in between all that, lots of sponsor activities and the like. So fan activities, throughout the campus, the idea is, how do we get these visitors that we're expecting to really come downtown and move around and experience all the great restaurants, bars that we already have in place? We're going to augment those with some concessions, just to make sure that we can be taking care of all of our visitors. We'll have an autograph stage, beer and wine gardens, a concert stage, which I'm going to get to. The iconic Roman numerals, so these are over 30 feet high, they are the most photographed Super Bowl element. So folks will be taking their picture nonstop for those days leading up to Super Bowl, and hopefully tweeting and Facebooking them around the world from Phoenix, with a smile on their face and hopefully their sunglasses on. We've mentioned broadcasts, NBC, NFL Network, and a few others will be right here in downtown broadcasting live programming, such as, we're in discussions now, the Today Show, the Nightly News, NBC Sports, so really some fun programming that our residents will be able to go and observe and hopefully participate in. In addition to that, nightly fireworks shows, sponsor activation, and then from a cultural and community standpoint, when we talk about that Arizona brand, we really want to make sure that we're showcasing our Hispanic population, which is so important to Arizona, as well as our Native American heritage, so that will also be incorporated into the programming. This is a rendering of the main concert stage that will be on what we lovingly call Block 23, in front of U.S. Aori Center, that beautiful parking lot, will have all sorts of new things on it. So the main concert stage will have local acts and entertainment leading up to national artists every night for free. We can't forget our beer and wine gardens over there, right next to the Hannie's parking lot. A couple Arizona-themed photo opportunities, so the idea is, the residents step up, take their picture, maybe it's Route 66, maybe it's the Grand Canyon, and again, they're going to tweet and Facebook that to their friends. Broadcast partners, this is an actual photo from Times Square, just this past year in New York, just enormous sets from NFL Network and NBC and the like. And that's always fun for our residents to take advantage of. Now, this is not our Arizona wow factor. This is a New York toboggan, eight-lane, that was on Times Square, as I mentioned, but it was really fun, they had over 25,000 folks come and take this ride right there on Super Bowl Boulevard, and so we will, this fall, be unveiling our Arizona wow factor, which will be something having to do with our natural outdoor wonders. The daily schedule, just to give you an idea, will open at noon, will have ongoing entertainment, again, all free, family-friendly, leading up to the concerts I mentioned, a nightly fireworks show that people can kind of count on, it'll be an appointment, if you will, at 10:00 PM, and then let the festivities go on until about midnight. So this is maybe a typical resident or citizen experience. They hop on the light rail, they come on down to Phoenix, downtown, I should say, they jump on our wow factor, not a toboggan, they take advantage of a great national recording artist, they watch the nightly fireworks, they head on over to NFL Experience inside the convention center, which is the biggest football entertainment zone known to man and anyone's ever seen. So it'll be great for our local residents, as well as regional folks, to come and participate. The NFL Experience, as I mentioned, is in the convention center, the north building, this is a paid ticket, and it really can be a day full of football-themed activities for you and your family. We anticipate over 200,000 visitors to that, again, autograph sessions, the biggest NFL shop you can imagine. Media Center will also be in the convention center, and that's where we anticipate 5,000 to 6,000 media members, really from around the world, that'll spend the week here writing stories about us. In New York, they recorded over 8 million articles, segments, postings about the Super Bowl. So this is the commercial for Arizona. This year, the NFL is also adding a piece where the folks that come into NFL Experience can get exposure to the media center, so that's a new element that we know residents will like. NFL Honors is a new program, about three years old, that will be held in Symphony Hall on Saturday evening, that's the award show for the NFL that also is broadcast. So best players, best plays, best coach, all those sorts of things, right from our Symphony Hall. So what's next? There's still a lot to come, and as the mayor said, this is hopefully the beginning of many updates to you all. We have hundreds of people working behind the scenes with the city staff, our corporate partners downtown, so it really is a group effort. And our idea is, how over the next few months leading up to Super Bowl, can we create a series of communication points, where we'll make unveilings, announce new and exciting things that are press-worthy, but we'll also build momentum with the residents and with the businesses here in Arizona, and kind of get them ready for it. So lots of announcements to come. On the outreach to local businesses, there's already a lot of that that's gone on, we've had over 40 individual meetings with downtown businesses. That will continue, and then we will get together likely in November for a downtown business rally, where all the business owners will come together and get ready to open our doors to the world. So with that, I'm going to stop, I'm going to turn it back over to Paul to talk a little bit about our committee structure.
Mayor and council, before we do that, I think this would be an appropriate time to let you engage in your questions and comments for David and Jay.
Okay, so I'll turn to the council members in just a moment, but just on a personal level, as Mayor of the city, just say what a pleasure it's been working with Jay, you and your team at the Super Bowl Committee, you've just the highest level of professionalism, and I know that Super Bowl Central, which logistically is bigger than almost anything we've done in the history of the city of Phoenix in terms of planning an event of that size and magnitude of organization, we've tried to be the very best partner to you that we can be, but you and your team have been outstanding to work with, and just, we're going to hit a home run, it's because of you, of you, and I really appreciate that. And David, of course, you have a hard job, you've got to raise a lot of money, and I know you've been diligent about it for now a few years to make this successful. We cannot host the event at the level that we need to without the fundraising, and you being the right face and spokesperson to lead this effort has been tremendous, so I just want to say thank you to you, because I know you have a day job, you have more than one day job, and so you've added, you've layered on top of that, ensuring that this is the most successful Super Bowl in history, and so far, so good. I mean, we've got a long way to go, and we're going to have a lot of partnerships still to announce and get there, but I mean, at least from my perspective, your leadership has been needed and the right one for the success of this endeavor, so just want to publicly say thank you in that regard. Now let's make sure we don't blow it from here on out, but that being said, I like where we're at right now. I'll hand over to, I'll look to my council members, see if anyone's have any comments or questions. The other comment would be also, I should have mentioned, is really thank you to this entire community, because a hosting event of this magnitude, it takes the corporate leadership, it takes leadership from the Mayor and Council, as well as our professional city staff to make sure the logistics, but we can't host this Super Bowl without thousands and thousands of people in this community volunteering and being ambassadors for us. And it also is going to take a lot of patience from people who live and work in downtown during that Super Bowl week, and I know that they're going to be there for us, this will not be easy during that Super Bowl week, but that's what it's going to take to make this a success, and I know the downtown business community is going to be there 100% for us. Comments or questions by members of this council, councilman, please.
And I'll just keep them short, too, I just want to congratulate Jay and David, you guys have done a fantastic job, I mean, something that large and the amount of work that you've put into that is outstanding, to say the least. I was here when they did the last Super Bowl I was around, and it was spectacular. This is on steroids, it's at least five to seven times larger, more planning, more in-depth, and more involvement, so you've got to be very proud. I want to thank staff, too, for the amount of work that they've put into it. There's a reason that this is downtown Phoenix, is because we were able to pull it together, and we see the importance of it, and we see the importance of your organization, what you've done for our city. And you're going to throw a touchdown pass on this one, you already have.
That's the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by members of the council? Councilman?
One of the reasons this is so exciting for us is just to show off the rest of our city, including the Midtown Museum District to the north and the Warehouse District to the south, so could you talk about some of the plans to promote other Phoenix treasures to folks who will be there for Super Bowl Central, particularly those from visiting outside of our community?
Sure. Well, we will have extensive visitors' guides, and that'll be digital as well as printed, and so we will be showcasing really the region, I think to your point, so that people can get to know some of, many of the hidden treasures of Arizona that we aren't known for, whether you live here and you get introduced to it, or you're coming from out of state. you live here and you get introduced to it, or you're coming from out of state. We also have an events group that has, is still working, but placing events really around the valley in many different venues, so that we can have a win at that level and get people introduced to them. And then we will have, and already have, a robust website, azsuperbowl.com, where we have, we're building out basically Experience Arizona, and so then it will be online, so that will be at everyone's fingertips, too. So we are looking at this as a regional effort and a regional win.
Fabulous.
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, additionally, and we'll talk about this in just a brief second, there is a committee solely focused on marketing and communications, and it is partners that include the C V B, the Arizona Office of Tourism, the Downtown Phoenix Partnership, Downtown Phoenix, Inc., and the goal is to communicate not only what's in downtown, what's in the central city, but the fact that we have the largest municipal park in the country at the southern end of our community, that we have wonderful mountain preserves throughout the central and north part of our community, that we are a broad, large, diverse community, because our goal is, this is a moment with all these eyeballs on us, we should take every advantage we can to share everything about ourselves and the opportunities that exist for people to both enjoy and come back and hopefully stay, grow a business, live.
Wonderful. Every time I go to an event just south of downtown, folks are saying, remind the Super Bowl Host Committee that we would love to host them and have a lot of unique, fun spaces. So.
We'll tell them you did that.
Yes. Check. And then Councilwoman Nochkowski and I have the pleasure of representing downtown, but we are getting some questions from particularly residential, from residences about traffic, and when are we going to announce what it will be like and sort of how folks can plan in more detail. And I know there's been a lot of work with the businesses, and some of them are making some pretty significant changes to make the Super Bowl more.
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, and Councilwoman Nochkowski, we have been working with nearly every property owner and every property manager, communicating to the depth of the information that we had, and literally it has been in the last two or three weeks where we are getting some firmament about how do we deal with when or if any, a street is closed, for what duration, how do we manage and accommodate, because everybody who is a current occupant of downtown. And so the plans are, in September, that we will start making the rounds, property by property, owner by owner, sharing with them their own personal story, and to hear their own direct questions about what it is we, what it is we are planning to do, making sure that, from my perspective, they have to still conduct their business if they are, if they're in business here, they need to be, they and their employees need to have a normal business day. If they live here, they need to be able to get to their residence just like they do every other day. And so we are very much focused, as we move into October, starting that exercise, again, property by property.
Great. And I have noticed a lot of enthusiasm, and I think people are very willing to be flexible, but they, the more information they have, the better decisions that they can make. Also heard enormous enthusiasm for, on the outdoor consumption of liquor, if we should decide to go in that particular direction.
That's not a recent phenomenon.
Well, it was one of the, I was just talking about street closures, and I was expecting questions about traffic, and I got questions about the atmosphere.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a big thanks to Jay, David, and Paul, and the entire team for the, all the work that's been done already. This is going to make us very proud, and this, as a lot of people have talked about, this is going to be a great opportunity for us to show an outstanding face to the world for Phoenix and the entire state, and thanks for all the work that you've done, done here already. Just a couple of questions, and kind of following, and Paul referenced this a little bit, but I hope that we take advantage of the opportunity, not only to direct all these out-of-town visitors to our preserves, but specifically maybe some of the not-as-well-known preserves, and to get out, I'm just, you know, imagining the types of crowds we might have at some of our most popular ones. So, you know, we've got a lot of great, we've got a lot of great preserves up in District Three, North Mountain, Lookout Mountain, where, you know, I think just kind of spreading that, that around a little bit would be good, but this will be an outstanding opportunity, because people who are not from here are, you know, amazed that we have this treasure that we do in the preserves. Another thing that I was wondering if you could talk about, you know, we're talking about a million people in downtown, and we want to, we want to have people come to downtown Phoenix. What are we doing to help make it easy for the people, say, you know, staying out in resorts and Scottsdale and elsewhere, to get to downtown Phoenix to enjoy the Super Bowl Central?
You can start, and I'm happy to, if you want.
Love to add on to what I say. We, as Paul mentioned, are coming up with basically traffic and parking plans right now. And so that's a combination of buses, rental cars, taxis, and the light rail. We would love to say that light rail can accommodate all of that, but we frankly know it can't. And so we have experts, actually, that work on every Super Bowl to look at those four transportation modes and figure out how we can make them work. We also need to remember that we're starting with Pro Bowl. We have the Waste Management Phoenix Open in the midst, and then we're going to end with Super Bowl. So there'll be a lot of people that want to move around the valley in a lot of different directions, and we're working on those plans right now.
Mayor, Councilman Gates, additionally, I think the other thing we are working with, our friends at the C V B and the Lodging Association, is to get information packets to each of the hotels and resorts throughout the community, since nearly all of them will be engaged in some fashion or another in housing folks who are not from here, and sharing with them exactly the information that Jay is describing of how can you access, in fact, all of these opportunities, but more specifically the ones that are specifically being programmed in downtown, and what are the various alternatives you have, how, what are the various ways you can park? What are, what if you wanted to park not in the downtown and take the light rail? And our goal is to try and provide a diversity of choices for people who want to travel to downtown, as well as communicate, just as you asked, about the other opportunities that exist throughout Phoenix and the region for the great things that exist here.
Just one follow-up, not to get too into the weeds here, but so this is going to start on Wednesday? Is that right, of that week? Are we, have we looked at, you know, I'd be concerned about a juror coming down to our court on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and getting, you know, into a traffic situation. Have we reached out to the courts, looked at the possibility of not doing trials? What are your thoughts on that?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, we indeed have been talking to the principal two, there's three courts, but there's two that have high volume, and I think that conversation is ongoing. We haven't been quite so bold as to suggest to anybody that they should otherwise not conduct their business here, but we are working with them to make an example. For instance, Municipal Superior Court, if you came in on Seventh Avenue, you would have a much simpler time getting to both of those venues and the, and the resources that are provided. So we're working both in terms of perhaps sharing information with their customers or their jurors on alternative ways to get here, and then we certainly will work with anybody about how we can, together with them, message just so that folks understand the nature of their operations during that week, where there will be some inconvenience at times for street travel.
Thank you.
And we are opening in two phases, if you will, Saturday, January 24th, for NFL Experience, and that will then stay open, and then Super Bowl Central, starting that next Wednesday. It's kind of a two-step process.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers? Councilman Allenzwell, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you very much for all the hard work, and for everyone who stood up. Thank you. I, this is obviously labor-intensive, it's already been, and as we move forward, I'm sure the workload will continue to grow, and that comment was just met by smiles, so that's, you have a tough, tough group. Yeah. So Jay, thank you for all the hard work, and David, thank you for all the hard work, and the mayor mentioned, you know, the tough job of raising money. I think the, it was the right decision to get David Russo there to, to help lead the charge. You've got to get an honest person who frankly everyone likes, and, and, and I think that that moves in the right direction. Now, I, too, was in a, in an official capacity in the last Super Bowl through the fire department. And, you know, I'm a Glendale firefighter, and one of the things that is, is, should be highlighted, and you just mentioned it, Jay, this is a regional, this is a regional event, and it's the best of what we have. And in fact, after the 2008 Super Bowl, I know that, I know that the NFL took some of these best practices because of how things were done right here in the valley, and to make them suggestions moving forward. You know, we, I worked with people from, from, people from municipalities for the next three or four Super Bowls that were here watching to see how Phoenix Fire and, of course, our police departments, and how all the agencies work together. So not only is this good for the economy, you know, $500 million, it's, it's good, you know, and $500 million is a lot, that's a lot of money, and there are a lot of people, and they will find their way everywhere, from the Warehouse District to downtown Phoenix to our neighboring cities. So this is a very good thing. The NFL Experience, I mean, there are a lot of fans right here. I think we broke records, if I don't, if I'm not mistaken. So there are a lot of people who are watching, who probably experienced these things, who just can't wait to take their kids back to something like the NFL Experience, or to, you know, whatever event that they may be looking for, of course, leading up to the Super Bowl and the game itself. On, on another note, so while this is good for the economy, and it's good to show off our, our valley, it's very good for public safety as well, and it's good for, for the people of Phoenix in this valley, because it gives our public safety departments an opportunity to, to go through those exercises. Of course, you know, you play how you practice, that's not, that's not just something that is said in the NFL, but it's something that we preach in public safety as well, and it's one of those opportunities to continue to work together, to, to, you know, to, regardless of the boundaries, when it comes down to it, we all have a job to do, and that's to keep people safe on the public safety side. So, so I couldn't be happier, and, you know, really looking forward to it, so thank you for the hard work, once again.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know people are really excited about this and really looking forward to it. I recall the last time, what amazed me, I know, everything downtown was super, but what I didn't expect was the air traffic, the corporate jet, or private jets, whatever they may be, that were parked at every small airport. And I'm wondering, are you working with all the airports I know? Deer Valley, Good Deer, Glendale, and even Gateway is, are in some stage of planning? Could you tell me a little bit about what you're doing and how to maximize the city of Phoenix at those outer locations?
Sure. Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, the aviation department and its other partner airports, you cited one, which is the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, but Scottsdale, Glendale, Buckeye, you, it is almost shocking how to get aerial views of how utilized, and to the, to the extent that our airports are utilized, to the point of, you know, brimming over with air traffic. So the airports are all, have been planning, they're all working together, and they're all engaged directly with the FAA to make sure there can be both a timely arrival of these, of this traffic, as well as a timely departure. So everyone has a understanding and expectation, and so the professional staff at all the airports have been working together, actually, for a number of months on that front. So I think the good outcomes we had in 2008, we expect equal or better this time.
I, I remember the limos lined up on Deer Valley Road, just trying to pull in to the airport. It was amazing. I had no idea. They were wingtip to wingtip. It was, it was quite the sight to see. And yes, and when we learned from staff, some of the people that departed from those planes, it was like, oh, wow, I should have been out here earlier. But, you know, the question I always get, Paul, is, does this cost us money? So what I'm asking is, as you continue down this road, that you come back with an operations report that tells how much it's cost us, and hopefully how much we made from it. And I want to include staff time, plus all the other extras that we, we put out for this. I know it, we touted it as 500 million, but everybody asks me every time, and I'd like to be able to have an answer this time. So if you could do that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, you can count on it, and so we look forward to, once our plans are more finalized, we can even bring an intermediate understanding of what we think is happening.
Thank you very much. We don't have that number at this point. I know we put resources in our budget for overtime, particularly for police and fire, to make sure that we're doing right by the people on the security side, but the other costs, it's a fair request. Okay. Councilman Allenzwell, you have something else?
Yeah, just one more thing. I mentioned public safety. You know, we want to keep our valley, our city, safe and welcoming, of course, clean. But having said that, I see John Trujillo in the audience. Can we talk a little bit about the sustainability, or what, what measures are in place? We want to, we want to encourage people to, to recycle. We have Reimagine Phoenix that John has been working on. What, what do we have in place, or what plans that we have?
Sure. What I would say is those, those are conversations that are happening right now. The NFL brings a real interest and has for years been committed to greening Super Bowl, so every year it gets better and better. So we've brought in our NFL expert on sustainability, and we are having conversations now about Super Bowl Central and how we can have a challenge. We may not be zero waste, but how can we have a zero-waste challenge to really set a good example and be mindful of that? So it's something that we want to make happen, and we're working through those details right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other council members? Councilman? Noankowski?
Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank David and Jay and Paul for all your hard work, and what a great opportunity for the city of Phoenix after SB 1070 and all that negative advertising that we got through the media, that we have a chance to tell our story. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to really tell the Phoenix story, to let people know that we're diverse, that we're open for business, and that we want people to come out to Phoenix. What I'd like to know is about the marketing, that we just don't go out there and market to those football fans, but also those, those families that have never come down to downtown Phoenix, and how do we actually try to attract them so they get to know they're downtown? And at the same time, especially the minority community, how do we get them to understand that you have some free events downtown? It's a great opportunity to learn about the American football, or just to be involved in this great event. The other thing, too, is how, can you explain to us, or tell us a little bit more, because I remember back in 2008, I was a council member, and we had the NFL Cares Program, where you had the NFL football players coming out to some of our schools in, in South Phoenix and the Maryville area, actually planting trees and, and painting out graffiti and, and reading to the kids. Do we have any of those programs planned? And also the NFL Yet Program that, that was awarded to the special group. So I think that those are some of the things that you can explain to the audience, what those, what the NFL Care Program is, and if there is some type of media campaign, especially for minorities, to be involved.
Okay, I'm going to see if I can address all those, if I can remember them. So from a general marketing standpoint, for us to gain the crowds that we want in downtown Phoenix, we will have an integrated marketing campaign, advertising, digital, social. Those will be both in English and in Spanish. We are the first host community to have a Spanish-language website and Spanish-language social media, so it's a very nice first for Arizona. So that will be going on, really probably mid-December and then through January to say, you know, come down and experience. From an NFL legacy standpoint, the process has changed just a little bit from 2008. In 2008, the NFL donated foundation money, and the host committee raised foundation money, and they gave away $2 million to two organizations in the valley. This time, it will go to many organizations in the valley, so we're excited to kind of spread that love around. And of the $2 million-plus dollars that we'll give out this time around, we've already awarded $600,000 in grants to six organizations in the valley, and one in Flagstaff, so I should say the state. And so we work with the NFL and our and our sponsors for that remaining money that will be given out and awarded right before Super Bowl so that they'll be kind of part of those festivities leading up to. And then I think the last part of your question was NFL Cares, kind of NFL players, how do we get them into the community? And that's something that our group will work closely with the NFL on and will be planned likely the 10 days leading up to the game. It helps that we'll have Pro Bowl here because we'll have the very best athletes from all the teams in town that week prior for the Pro Bowl game. So we'll see them, I'm sure, involved in a lot of community activities as well as the Super Bowl players as well as alums. So we'll work closely with the NFL to make sure we're making that happen.
Well, thank you so much. The other question, Mayor, is that you have Councilmember Gallegos and myself that represents downtown where most of these activities. We would love to, if you need our help, especially reaching out to our residents or businesses in downtown Phoenix. A lot of them actually do call us and they ask this concerned questions about the Super Bowl. If there's any way we can help out or to have a, maybe a weekly update on what's going on with the downtown events, that would really be helpful. I know for our office, it would really help. I'm not sure about Kate, if you're getting those same types of calls.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, before the day is over, we will be with your staff setting those meetings. So we look forward to it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Any additional comments by members of this council? You did, and I know we're going to talk about public safety in just a minute, the security aspect of it, which is critically important for the success of, of the endeavor. I just want to say, my impression for this time versus the last time, as, as far as it relates to this being a regional event, my feeling is that last time, there was a lot more discussion among the cities in the Valley about what chunk of this we're going to get in our community. And this time around, I think mainly because of leadership, Jay, of you and David, it's more, much more of an attitude of what can we do to make this endeavor successful? You know, all, every city in this region has a role to play in making this successful. If we as a region are going to host events of this magnitude, we all have to be all in, if you will, and, and be team players and be willing to say, what role can we play to make this endeavor successful? If we're going to, if we're going to be successful in the future in getting future Super Bowls or other like events of that magnitude, it's so important that, that the entities making these decisions understand that this community is one that really works well together. And I think that, the fostering of that attitude among the various cities has really come from, from you and it's very, very much appreciated. We play, obviously, Phoenix plays a uniquely special role because of the assets that the people of the city of Phoenix have chosen to invest in to make this such an attractive place. The light rail, the convention center hotel, these are not uncontroversial investments that were made by the people of the city of Phoenix. But certainly when it comes to being able to host this event, to have a million people come to our downtown, mostly people from around the Valley to enjoy their downtown. It's because of the investments that the people of the city of Phoenix have made over the course of, of many years. And so I think you're hearing from us that we embrace the role, the unique role that we play in, in hosting events like this now and in the future. And I really want to thank you for kind of helping us to foster that, that positive partnership between the various cities. I know it's critical for, for the success of, of what we're going to do in, in January and February. So thank you very much. All right. Thank you so much. Go raise some more money.
Thank, thank you all.
All right. Thanks. All right. So next, Paul, we're going to have a discussion of some of the security aspects. And obviously, we can't talk about all aspects of security for this game, but what police and fire and emergency management, homeland security are able to talk about relative to security and preparation for this game. We wanted to give an update to the council.
Mayor, members of the council, if you look on the, on the slide up on the screen, I referenced that there's a series of committees that city staff has organized in order to help plan for the event and have a good flow of an outcome. One of the most critical ones there, even though they are, they have engaged themselves in every subcommittee, is the Public Safety Subcommittee. And it's really focused on how can we deliver a safe event that is least obtrusive from a security standpoint, but still ensures that we're ready to respond if the need arises. And so I'd like to introduce Kevin Kalkbrenner. He'll introduce his team in turn to discuss with you city staff's plans for public safety surrounding the Super Bowl.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on Super Bowl planning. Presenting with me is Phoenix Police Commander Gary Brazzi from the Homeland Defense Bureau and one of the Unified Incident Commanders for the Week of Super Bowl. Also, Phoenix Fire Central District Commander Dan Seville, who will be the Intelligence Section Chief for the Week of the Super Bowl. In 2008, Super Bowl XLII, a group of public safety leaders from the Valley pitched the idea of a multi-agency unified command approach to managing the Super Bowl. The NFL agreed to the concept and the approach was such a success that it became a template for managing Super Bowls ever since. This year, Super Bowl XLIX, as you have heard, will be bigger and much more complex than Super Bowl XLII. In addition to the game itself, the Valley will be hosting multiple events and venues over a 10-day period. Though this is a huge undertaking, the purpose of this briefing is to show you that we have been working on this since early 2013 and we are ready. All the members of the public safety team continually process risk analysis using real-time information as we move forward in the planning effort. We have identified the persons we need to protect and build plans around that effort. I would like to point out a few of the risks that we are planning for prevention and preparedness, particularly the cyber protection. It has emerged as a, as a significant threat and it will require a high level of effort and coordination. So how will we do this?
Mayor, members of the council, so what you see before you here is all those, those threat assessment, that threat, threat analysis that translates into all these raw resources here. So every aspect of whatever resource that we need to manage this event, anything that has to do with the Super Bowl, is represented here in these boxes. So the graphic there is, it's not intended for you to read all the boxes, but just to notice how complex the resource issue is. There's 24 resource work groups that represents each one of those. And to give you an example of some of those that are significant, we have our tactical group, which is basically the SWAT guys. We have EOD and, and those are the, the bomb guys. That resource in particular, there's lots of sweeps that's going to be on our, demanded of us, not just the stadium, but in the downtown area, the buildings in the downtown area, even the buses for escorts and those kinds of things. So it's pretty, it's pretty intensive for, of a demand on just that resource. So what this group does is identify and pre-identifies resources from across the region so that we can engage everybody to be involved in supporting the Super Bowl planning. Another one is aviation. I talked about that earlier and we'll, we'll give you some more details of what public safety's been doing in that arena. So another one I just wanted to point out real quick is Center Top, and that's the Multi-Agency Resource Work Group. So what that is, I want to talk about a little about, a little bit about that. What we're doing in both the police and fire departments is pre-identifying resources that are bodies, their positions. And we want to pre-identify and build as a robust roster as possible so that we, on an as-needed basis, we can plug in these bodies and staff all of our, our different venues and events as best we, as best we can. So by doing that, we would like to have more resources available than, rather than run short. Another advantage by doing business that way is we can control our overtime costs. We can start plugging these bodies in by changing hours and days off where we can control our overtime and minimize it. So we think that, you know, across, across the events, that we can take as, as many resources as we can all across our departments. So for the police department, for example, we're talking about, you know, looking at all the different precincts. We're talking about all the specialty details. So if, you know, you might work in Violent Crimes Bureau and you might be doing homicide investigations and you're not going to be taken offline for that. But there's a whole bunch of other people there that we can take offline for that week and a half to two-week period and plug you in where we need you and tell you what your hours are, what your days off are. In the long run, that's going to help us control our overtime here. So this is the Public Safety Command. It's called our Incident Management Team. And so this is basically just an illustrate to everybody here what our planning structure looks like. So all our resource working groups, this is what it translates to. Take our resource working groups and they're all plugged in over here. So one of the things that we want to talk about in particular is on the left-hand side there. And that, we'll, we'll blow that up for you. But what I want to talk about are Operations Section. And we want to talk about these four different groups here in particular.
Mayor, City Council, what's, what's in front of you is, is our organizational structure for this very complex and dynamic event that we call Super Bowl XLIX. What we use and what we use to manage this, this event is the National Incident Management System, which is called the NIMS model. This is a system that is used nationwide. It is a system that we have used very successfully for past large-scale events and unplanned events here in the city of Phoenix. It is a scalable system where it means that we can build this system out as, as much as we need to, to be able to meet the needs that we, that are required of us based on intelligence and information that we're provided and are tasked for that day. And so this is how we break down this very complex and dynamic event. We're looking at the airport branch here, which is, which is under our Operations Section. And Councilwoman Williams, you talked about the connecting all the dots with aviation too. So as you can see, part of our operations when it comes to the airport branch is making sure that we are providing for the security, life safety, providing for good access and egress for all those people who are going to be using the various airports and the, and the aviation assets that the city of Phoenix is responsible for. So from a public, public safety standpoint, what we will emphasize is life safety. Looking to Commander Brazzi, we will look at security in, in a perimeter, outer perimeter, making sure that those people who are coming to the Valley to visit for this event too, that they can make sure that they are coming to a fun and safe environment too. So that's how we break down, using, using the NIMS model for our airport branch too. On the fire side, we'll make sure that we have enough resources there and accessibility for us to be able to access in the case of a medical emergency or hazardous materials emergency too. And what we do is that on a daily basis, we take information and intel and we can readjust our resources as we need to. If we see a huge ingress at Sky Harbor, then we can go ahead and fluctuate and move our resources to that area.
Just add one more thing to the airport branch to address your concerns, Councilmember Williams. From 2008, that's definitely on our radar screen and it's been there all along. So in the previous slide, I was showing you the resource work groups. That's a specific group that is tasked with addressing those issues in particular. So we, we do acknowledge that that is an issue and that's the very reason why we established its own branch on its own. So we know that's a significant section that we have to, have to manage. In the downtown branch, that, that is our most significant branch management challenge that we're going to have in the downtown area because it's so robust. As the host committee was talking about, we've got the, you know, the main events of Super Bowl Central and the NFL Experience, the Media Center, Downtown Sheraton, and some of the other major events that are in that area. So that's going to present a number of challenges for the police department to staff all of those positions. So suffice to say that we're working on that right now. We're developing operations plans for that in particular that are going to be due with our first draft on October 1st. And so, you know, we want to get out ahead of this. So we have plenty of time to address all the staffing challenges and make sure that we plug in as many people that we need in order to manage all those events. And along that, along the way there, from beginning to end, we'll talk more about that, but we're, we're trying to paint a picture right now of what events are occurring on which days and which hours so that, you know, every day it's going to be, it's going to change and it's going to develop and to one demand to another depending on what the day is and what the hour of the day is. That last bottom box there, the Event Division, what that represents is all of those events that we don't anticipate. Those seem to be growing on a daily and weekly basis, leading all the way up to Super Bowl. So one of the things that you're going to see in there is when we talk about the footprint, there's all of those areas around that, not just within the 12-block radius, but all those venues that are outside of that. That's going to have an impact on our staffing as well. So that's another challenge to us. It's, again, that's on our radar screen as well to anticipate what the, all of those other events are so that we can forecast what our, our staffing demands are and we're not leaving ourselves short.
Here you see our, our hotel branch. Part of our responsibility is, is obviously to be able to provide for the safety and security of the, for the NFL Headquarters Division, which is going to be one of our local hotels. Also too, for the NFL Pro Bowl, we have the AFC Players Hotel Division too. So within the city of Phoenix footprint, we do have, we have identified two major hotels. We have the Arizona Biltmore Hotel and we have the Arizona Grand Resort down in, down at the base of South Mountain too. So with that, we are also to concentrating on the, on the availability and the, and the capability of providing for that security and providing for any type of incident that may occur within the, within those footprints. You will see on any one of these boxes that you see here in front of you is that you will see a unified command front. You will have a police representative and a fire representative so that we're on the same sheet of music. So that we are, are understanding what's going on. It enables us to break down the silos of information and be able to provide an adequate and very safe response for our first responders on the police and fire side and able to, and we can also to mitigate any type of event that goes on in those locations too. So that's, we do understand that the hotel branch is, is something else too. That's our area of responsibility and that's why we include it into our organizational chart there as well.
And I'll just talk real briefly about the last section. It's on the right-hand side of our Incident Management Team and that's the, the Intelligence Section. So all those things that we just talked about, the airport branch, downtown branch, and hotel branch, we call it intel-led operations. So that is being monitored right now. We have an Intelligence Operations Center that's going to be established by the FBI, one of our significant partners at the federal level. And there's a lot of movement parts to that, but essentially, we're looking at intelligence right now. It's going to dictate what our operations look like in all of those branches. So that's going to determine our response plans. It's going to determine our staffing levels and a host of other things.
Mayor, City Council, as, as we saw in the previous presentation too, this is going to be our entire footprint. This is what we call Super Bowl Central. What we are asking our division and group supervisors, in essence, those are our, our Forward Command Officers and Forward Lieutenants and, 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 and Police Sergeants. We're asking them right now to start to develop an operational response plan. We know this is going to be a huge footprint. We understand that this is going to be going on for a matter of 10 days. We also understand too that we have our normal day-to-day operations that we have to be responsible for. We have a huge number of Phoenix residents coming in to work on those daily basis too. So we're asking our, our division and group supervisors within that NIMS model, that NIMS process, to build out their system, to build out their operational plans right now to be able to access these various locations. And then we also understand too is that on a day-to-day basis, we still have to respond on various, on hundreds of 911 calls too, on the police and fire side too. So keeping that in mind, we, we understand that we may have to resource, have resource shuffle within this, within this footprint here. But as time comes in October, when the NFL comes out again and they provide us more information on further plans too, we're, we're looking to solidify those plans as well.
So just to add a couple of comments, I already talked about this 12-block radius is our biggest demand on resources. But in addition to that, this is going to grow exponentially all around the region, particularly in the downtown area that we have to manage. It's going to impact us because there's going to be activity and incidents associated that are going to require a police response because of the, the addition of events in that area. But the good news is, is that through our planning process, we're trying to be proactive and participate as, as much activity as possible. That's going to get us to about the 90% mark of what's known. And then the other 10% is what we don't know. So 90, 90% puts us in a range that's pretty good for pre-planning.
Also too, Mayor, City Council, one thing that we are also emphasizing with our operational plans is because we do know that we are going to have a million-plus visitors into the downtown area, is that we're looking at the code enforcement, we're looking at crowding issues, we're looking at fire prevention too, to make sure that this is a safe environment, fun environment. And so we're also working in concert with our fire prevention folks on, within the fire department, also too with planning and development too, because we do know that, that we want to make sure that accessibility and just the, the events going on within that footprint are, are safe.
So that was the overview.
So that was the overview for the Phoenix operation. But with multiple cities managing multiple venues and the need for coordination of effort, Multi-Agency Coordinating Center will be established. We're going to do it over at the Emergency Operations Center, and 165 personnel from all involved agencies will have a seat at the table. And again, if you look at that Operations Section, each one of those cities will be represented in that operation. Next, what we want to take you through is what that, quickly and, but succinctly, what the next 10 days are going to look like.
So just to add to that, you see the ones that are represented there in the Operations Section. So of course, it's Phoenix, and it's Glendale, Scottsdale, and Gila River. So those are all the significant partners that we're working with across the region right now, because they have significant venues or events that are occurring in their jurisdiction. So they all have their own Incident Management Team. What the MAC is for short, that's our connectivity across the region. That's our connectivity between different jurisdictions, where the MAC has two primary responsibilities. Number one, and that's real-time information sharing across the region. So if something happens in Glendale, we want to know about it right away, or in Scottsdale wants to know about it right away. That's going to happen on an ongoing basis throughout this management activity. The other thing that the MAC has the ability to do is to leverage and mobilize resources. And that's why we're pre-identifying all those Resource Work Groups that have those resources, where we have the ability to deploy them anywhere in the region on an as-needed basis. And that's going to give us an advantage to any type of activity associated with the Super Bowl events. We're going to be ahead of it.
So the way it's going to look for us as we start the events is we are going to build out the Multi-Agency Coordinating Center. It's going to be located at our City of Phoenix EOC building, which is currently located on our Phoenix Fire Training Academy. Some of you are aware of that from our recent storm deployment that we had, obviously, because we see Councilwoman Guyel shaking her head there. So what we're planning on doing is to kind of kick off the weeks of events, is that on January 19th, we are going to build out the Multi-Agency, the MAC, on January 19th. That's going to be like our precursor. We're calling it like a dress rehearsal, where we're able to get all of the agency representatives from our federal partners, state, county, local, and the tribal partners into the room so we can have a dress rehearsal, so we can understand how the MAC works, how information sharing works, how resource allocation works in that setting too. After that, at 0600 on Saturday morning, six o'clock in the morning on Saturday morning, is when we are going to go live. That is going to, we're going to start to see players come into the Arizona Biltmore. That's for, obviously, for the AFC Players too, for the NFL Players Hotel, excuse me, for the Pro Bowl. For our operational periods too, because we do know that this is going to be complex and going out for a number of days. We're going to have two operational periods. We're going to start at 6 o'clock in the morning, and we're going to do two 10-hour shifts with our public safety personnel and all the partners who are in the room too. And we're going until 2:00 in the morning, but we're going to split that up into two 10-hour shifts. Also too, what we do plan on doing is that we can fluctuate those hours. If it's based upon information and intelligence that's telling us that we need to stay longer or we can cut the hours short, then we can do that based upon the information that we're gathering. Going into that NFL Experience, which we know is going to be at the Phoenix Convention Center, that is going to open on Saturday night too, so at that time, you will start to see a switch of resources, a lot of police officers too, that you will see in the NFL Experience area too, making sure that we have traffic control and foot patrol in that area too.
Okay. So to continue on with the schedules, on the following Monday following the Pro Bowl, that's when the build-out of the Cardinal Stadium is going to start. And all of the pre-planning that's been going on for Super Bowl Central, that would have already been underway, and it'll be prepared to be open on that Monday after Pro Bowl is over with. So a perimeter is going to be established, personnel entering and leaving the area, they're all going to be screened. Vehicles and equipment are going to be screened as well, that ingress and egress, and security plans are going to be established. Following that, on the actual game day, by that time, long before that time actually, Super Bowl tickets will already have been issued, and the fans will begin to arrive. All the fans coming in as well, they're going to be screened. And once inside, they'll be able to enjoy numerous activities provided or enhance the overall experience while waiting for the game to happen. There's going to be a Command Center for Public Safety that'll be managing the game itself. That's going to be established on-site. There's also Public Safety Command Center that'll be in place, both Command and Control Centers that are linked together. We'll have connectivity between the Multi-Agency Coordinating Center, the MAC, between us, the Phoenix IMT, all of that will be connected, so we'll all be communicating together. Temporary flight restriction is going to be established by the FAA as well. And then the MAC will also be monitoring game activities as well as the operations plans that are formed during post-game celebration throughout the Valley. So we're going to have the MAC up and running, and that's going to be our management tool for all activities associated with that on game day. One thing to keep in mind is that prior to the game, there's still going to be events going on in downtown Phoenix. We'll still have to manage that leading up to the game, and then post-game activities, so it's going to be a pretty long day. Again, I want to, you know, I just want to mention that this isn't the first time that we've done this. We've got a whole laundry list of significant events that have been hosted in Phoenix. There's a lot of experience there and a lot of people, many, vast majority of the people that are involved in that planning process are involved this time around as well.
Next two slides have been covered, so I will skip up to our strategic partners. The Super Bowl has a special event assessment rating of one, or a SEER rating of one, which is the highest priority, equal that of a presidential inauguration. What that does is it frees up federal resources to assist us with managing this event. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security has appointed two federal coordinators to assist in getting federal support we need. Examples of that support that we're taking advantage of is infrastructure assessment teams, the FBI Critical Incident Response Group, the FBI Hazardous Materials Response Team, and both the FBI and the Department of Homeland Security Intelligence Analysts. We also have the support from the military in terms of planning and equipment. So as you can see, we've got a lot of strategic partners, and the list keeps growing. So we're very proud of our private partnerships, as well as our relationship with the NFL and the Host Committee, and we work to set the bar even higher as we move towards Super Bowl XLIX.
Mayor, Members of the Council, that represents our presentation on safety and security, and I know the team stands ready to answer any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you very much. It was a thorough report, but it should be in light of the importance of the work that you are doing. I have a quick question regarding Super Bowl Central in downtown Phoenix. Is your expectation now that that security for the four nights of the Super Bowl Central will be multi-jurisdictional?
Mayor, Members of the Council, for Super Bowl Central, I think it's going to be just related to Phoenix resources. I think that we'll be able to cover all aspects of that with just Phoenix. Again, we want to use in-kind on-duty resources as much as possible to mitigate our overtime expenses.
All right, I appreciate that. Now that you need advice, that may be an opportunity to work with some of the partners, some of the other cities that even aren't representative, that are current strategic partners, that may want the opportunity to provide security, obviously in a subordinate role to Phoenix, but there may be some ways to do that as efficiently as possible, just an idea, and I'm sure you've thought about it already.
Mayor, if I could add to that, the partners in our region, we're all working together at all different levels, you know, at the federal level, state and the local level. And so when I say that just in the downtown area, it's going to be specific to Phoenix, there's a lot of specialty units that are actually going to be multi-jurisdictional. So there's, just to keep in mind that there's a lot of moving parts to the security plan where there's going to be resources that are going to come from other jurisdictions that we're already working with and are already planning on working with. One thing in particular is that, you know, because the stadium is situated in Glendale, we have to keep in mind that Phoenix is the largest department, both on police and fire by far, of all the other jurisdictions. And the expectation is that Glendale can't, or they don't have the ability to manage the stadium on their own. So there's going to be multiple jurisdictions that are going to support the security plan on game day at the stadium. So Glendale, Phoenix will be there, DPS will be represented, and then there's a whole range of other resources that are going to be there on that day.
At least at this time, because I know there's a lot more planning to go, and the NFL has more meetings, so we don't have that level of detail at this time. But right now, is your expectation that the level of support that Phoenix Police, Fire, Emergency Management, and Homeland Security will have to provide on game day in support of Glendale will be significantly greater than the last time that stadium hosted a Super Bowl?
I think that, Mayor, Members of the Council, the fair answer right now, we anticipate that our staffing levels might be a little bit more than what happened in 2008, but we're looking at normal staffing levels that Phoenix provides already for any game that occurs within the stadium there. So the Resource Working Group that has Multi-Agency Jurisdiction Work Group for Staffing in particular, we're already looking at that, what the staffing plan looks like and what the impact is going to be on Phoenix. So it's something that we would already support anyway. I think where you're going to see a significant number of resources that might be mobilized is in the event that there's some sort of incident that occurs associated during game time or around the stadium. That's, it's very likely that Phoenix would respond to that and support that.
Are the security requirements significantly greater in 2015 than they were in the last time we hosted the Super Bowl here locally?
I think it's fair to say that there is a significant increase only because the event is so much bigger. There's a lot more moving parts, and there's going to be a lot more participation with everything that's going on. The last time, we didn't have the Pro Bowl. Last time, we didn't have the NFL Experience in the downtown area. And then the Phoenix Open in Scottsdale is going to be significantly larger this time around. They're expecting 750,000 attendees and breaking records because they've completely redone the golf course out there, and they've added, quote-unquote, "a second 16th hole." So there's going to be, you know, across the region, a lot more activity.
Mayor, if you will, in addition, as I mentioned before, with the federal support, that gives us the ability to create force multipliers. And in that Multi-Agency Coordinating Center, and with the efforts of the Resource Working Groups, we will have a bigger multi-jurisdictional pool to draw on and be able to shift resources throughout the Valley over the 10-day period.
All right, excellent. And of course, we know the city of Glendale has been very open with the fact that they're going to need additional support this time around. They were unsuccessful in getting financial support from the state legislature, so I know they're going to turn more to their regional partners to make sure that that security is as strong as possible. Obviously, Phoenix is going to be the very best partner we can be with Glendale to make sure that the fans coming in from around the country and the world are as safe as possible. And Phoenix, again, plays a unique, has a unique role and responsibility to play, even outside of our jurisdiction, the city of Glendale, to make sure that game is as safe as possible in light of their request for additional help. I know we're going to step up to the plate, and I really believe strongly that many, many other jurisdictions in the Valley, even ones that maybe traditionally haven't played a role in security an event like this, will step up to play a role, so that way Glendale isn't put at an unfair financial disadvantage relative to this. They really just need to reach out to their partners, and I think that's what we're seeing and are going to continue to see to make sure the game is as safe as possible. Other questions or comments, Members of the Council? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. So definitely, I think of paramount importance is the security and the safety. The downtown activities, so how, I'm just looking at the map that was provided, how do you get in and out? Are there checkpoints? Do you have passes? What if you work down there? And maybe you're interested in the NFL stuff, maybe you're not, but you've still got to get to work. I mean, are we searching every bag that goes down there? Can you just comment on what the plan is?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I'll start at a big level and allow the public safety staff to get to precision. But the goal is even while Super Bowl Central activities are scheduled to start at noon, the major street closures are going to happen progressively because the bright-line test we provided is that people still need to be able to get into business activities through 5:00 p.m., through the normal business hours, and that there needs to be a standard egress path for all employees and all business operations in downtown. But there will be a progressive street closure as those hours move along. And so that'll ultimately become a closed campus where there will be entry points. It is, as Jay Perry said, free of charge. There will be some identification review and potentially banning of folks related to those who wish to consume alcohol within the Super Bowl Central campus. They will be checking, I believe, bags at the entry point. There will be private security staff there in support, not as the primary public safety agency, but in, just as you would see at any event, you know, the T-shirt, security-oriented staff who will help deal with some of those activities. But the primary goal is those who work and live in downtown can conduct their business, albeit with some inconvenience, but through the business day can move in and out of downtown, get to their work, leave their work, maybe in a little bit of a different route, but can still conduct business during that 10-day period.
But I guess if they get there, let's say at noon, and they want to get to their office, and they're going to have to stand in line while other people get carted because they want to drink alcohol, it just seems like maybe they ought to leave really early for work. Because I just, I mean, we're talking a million people, we're talking 100,000 a day. I just don't know how practical what you just told me really is.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, since most of our employees in downtown park in a parking garage, although not exclusively, those facilities are going to remain open through the business day, and that the full closures are going to happen after the business day has ended. And so we can, if you would like, and we can come give you a more specific briefing on the details of how the venue closure, a street closure and the venue openings will work, but the goal is to allow those who work here to continue doing that work and only have progressive closures as the workday concludes.
That's fine. I just, I was looking at the map, and I was just sort of wondering how this was actually going to happen in practical terms. So I thank you, I would appreciate the briefing. Thank you.
My understanding, based on the briefs I've received, is that although each person may not have the most convenient route to their place of business that they're used to on a day-to-day basis, they will have a reasonable route to get to their place of business during the business hour. So no business or office building is going to be cut off from access for their employees or customers during this time. Again, it's going to be less convenient because of all the activity, but the access will be there. Other comments or questions, Members of this Council? Councilman?
Usually, weather at this time of year is absolutely fabulous, but we've learned that the usual weather patterns may or may not hold. So could we run a weather-related Emergency Operations Center out of the EOC while the Multi-Agency Coordinating Committee is active? Could they handle that as well?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Everybody will be there, so it'll be really convenient.
All right, other comments or questions from Members of the Council? Councilman Valenzuela, please.
So you're saying there's a plan? I'm 100% confident in the people at the table and in our first responders. In the fire world here in Phoenix, in the Valley, you know, nearly 30 departments run as one seamless department. And that is every day. That's happening right now as we speak. And then, of course, we have the finest police department in the country, in the Phoenix Police Department, and lots of other great departments in the Valley. And 2008 gave all of us an opportunity to really take it to a next level, but it's more than just police and fire, it's all of these other agencies. And, you know, as Chief Cockburner or Chief Seville, someone just mentioned that, you know, I think it was you, Chief Cockburner, that the NFL actually took that template or made some changes to the new template because of what was seen here. And, you know, of course, that is said with all humility, because we have to continue to get better, we have to continue to work harder, and I guess because, because I know what the training is all about, I know all the different facets of what is out there from the terrorism liaison officers to, you know, our haztacs and our dogs and everything else, I just, I'm 100% confident in the capacity of our public safety first responders and, of course, you know, everyone else who's helping to lead this moving forward.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any additional comments before we close this item out?
Laura gave me 30 seconds. I think I have two more seconds. She said if I say anything, I only have 30 seconds. All right, now I'm good.
Yeah, we're good to go? All right, would anybody like to compare Phoenix Fire to Glendale Fire at this time? All right, would anybody like to compare Phoenix Fire to Glendale Fire at this time? You don't have to answer that.